This is a special session we have tonight. It's gonna be on planning and all roads and housing, right? Transportation and housing. So, Mr. Rains, I'll let you kick it off.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First and foremost, we want to thank the council for scheduling this special study session to discuss these two topics. And I'll go into a little more depth about each before I hand the baton to Mr. Tice, who'll take the first, who'll be making the first presentation this evening. I know that there's a number of questions and comments and the like that come with these two topics, housing and transportation. And we had originally began discussions about scheduling each of these individually in the month of April. But ultimately, as we began to, as a staff, review the various elements, we felt like the two would really work very nicely together. And while they are two different topics, you'll begin to see some of the planning that the city is working on as a staff. And some of that planning is, in fact, particularly on the roadway side, included in the proposed fiscal year 25 budget. And so, we want to introduce a package, a transportation package, that the mayor and council got a snippet of information at a budget retreat. We'll go into more depth this evening. But on the housing side, moving back to that for just a moment, obviously, there's a lot of discussion about housing in a variety of topics, from affordability to access to housing to zoning and the like. And so, I know the mayor and council is well aware of the number of bills that were introduced this year in the legislature. And while we're not here to talk specifically about those this evening, there is a component of Mr. Tice's presentation that will talk about and introduce some of the various aspects that the city of Casa Grande has been working on, even outside of what the legislature has been suggesting related to access to affordable housing. And so, the mayor and council will recall that, right before the end of the calendar year, Mr. Tice and his team had put together a very in-depth analysis on the housing stock of the community. And tonight, we're going to give a bit more focus. It's a bit of a deeper dive. But I've asked, I've asked Paul and his team to put together the PowerPoint presentation with an emphasis on multifamily, because I know there's a fair amount of dialogue that is transpiring in regards to multifamily. But more importantly, to give the council just a bigger view, a bigger picture of what we talked about in November and December. And so, for the public's information, there are no decisions that are going to be made tonight. The council will not be taking any action on these topics. It really is to engage the council, present and engage the council, in the hopes that staff can come from this meeting and ultimately with a bit of guidance that, and that we could begin to incorporate any policy changes and the like. And I just want to add one more element, and that is that, at the end of the transportation component, everyone will see the financing sources that are available for roadway improvements. And there will be some discussion that staff would like to engage the council on specifically related to those particular topics. So, with that, without further ado, I'll hand the baton to Mr. Tice and let him move into the deeper dive of housing.
Thanks, Larry. So, Mayor and City Council, as Larry was mentioning, we were here back in November to provide a presentation to you on the Casa Grande housing needs and supply. We talked about both issues. This evening, we're gonna really just focus a little bit more on the supply side. We're not gonna talk about the needs specifically. But we did take the opportunity to take a little deeper dive into the supply, and we want to share our findings with you on that. So, with that, if you remember on the last presentation in November, we really related all our work back to the general plan, because the general plan is really giving us some guiding principles here in terms of housing, to increase the range of housing choices and products available to the members of Casa Grande community, to support the development of infill lots, to encourage high-density residential development in our downtown area, all as guiding principles. And I think those are all really relevant and important principles for us to keep in mind as we make housing choice decisions. The last presentation did look at the need side, how many dwelling units are needed, what kind of housing products are needed, and we talked extensively about that. We're really not gonna revisit that to any degree this evening. But I do want to also mention that one of the conclusions that we made at the last time we made this presentation was that regardless of, as we make decisions on the supply, housing supply, that we are going to approve through our decisions, whether they're by Planning Commission or council, that we need to keep in mind that we probably have to prioritize certain types of housing developments, ones that provide affordable units through being financed by low-income housing tax credit, those that might serve our elderly population or senior population, and those that are in our downtown area, and that help revitalize downtown, as well as provide housing for our community. This pie chart was in the presentation that we made in November, and it's, it kind of, it reflects what the housing, the housing types that are being provided in the community today, and probably will likely do so for the foreseeable future. Still, it'll be primarily, primarily, single-family homes. About 60% of the dwelling units that'll be constructed will be single-family, traditional. 15% will be apartments, 15% will be manufactured homes, and 10% will be the build-to-rent. The wildcard here is really the build-to-rent, because it's a new product type that's just now being introduced into the marketplace. And how well that does will kind of determine whether it holds the 10% or less or more. Really, that's my best guess right now. But this is, I think, the new norm, as far as I can tell, for the ratio of type of housing that we can expect. The single-family portion really is governed and directed by mortgage rates, more than anything else, right? There's a, there's a demand that definitely varies depending on mortgage rates, because that sort of determines the affordability of a single-family home purchase. So, gonna now review with you some of the new information that we have developed, and as we took a little bit deeper dive into our supply. The first thing that we did is, we, every day, as we approve new building permits, we run a running tab on how many final plats we have with vacant lots, how many vacant lots we have with cause. And so, you can see that number is the first really interesting piece of data that I have to share, is we're down to 975 lots, vacant, single-family home lots with cause. That's probably a little more than a year's supply. So, unless, that's kind of, that's a red flag for me. What makes me, gives me some comfort is the number to the left of that, which is that we have around, for the preliminary plats that we've approved, that are currently approved, and they're under review to become final plats and come back to council to create new buildable lots, there's 6,300 lots in those plats that we currently are processing to move forward to become final plats. So, that's good. That means that developers understand that they, that we need more inventory in the final plats, and they're moving their land forward to get it entitled to become recorded final plat that can be available for building permits. We still do have around 85, 8,600 preliminary plats that were approved, probably back in the 2005, 2006 timeframe. They were granted cause at that time by ADWR, but they've since expired, because our preliminary plats expire after two years. But they're still have, they maintain their cause, they just would have to resubmit for a new approval of their preliminary plat, and then a new final plat by council. So, with all of those, we still have around 16,000 vacant, single-family lots with cause. That's about a 20-year supply for us still, assuming about 750 homes constructed each year, which is a pretty, a pretty good number. Some years it'd be more, some years it might be less, but it's probably a pretty good average. So, we still have about 16,000 vacant lots to, with certificates of assured water supply. Additionally, we have some condominium projects that have certificates of assured water supply. We only have 152 that are in the final plat category. That's the project, that's the picture on the bottom of the screen, and that's Casilla Lofts behind Lowe's, which is actually a condominium project, and has vacant lots that new condos can be built on. And we actually do have a new condominium plat that we're reviewing for additional 136 condominiums, which is very encouraging to me, because frankly, I think there's a market and a need for condominiums in our community. So, we do have a developer that is understanding that need and is looking to create a new condominium project. We still have 3,200 condominium potential lots that have cause in various parts of the community, and I'll share a little bit more on that in just a second. This map shows us where all the new single-family subdivisions with cause are located in the community. So, the good news about this map is, one is, it really helps us, from a transportation planning standpoint, to understand which transportation corridors are gonna be impacted by new, single-family growth. And we're gonna, I'm gonna share that we have the same information for all of our residential areas, so that's good. I mean, we can really predict with a great deal of accuracy where our new residential development is gonna occur within our community. Same thing with the condominium plats, they're dispersed, that's nice, they have good spatial distribution throughout the community, so we, but we know where all of those are. Then we, we looked a little bit deeper dive into our multifamily supply. And what we did is, that first category, well, we looked, we really added, we revised two pieces of data. The first, we'll go with zoning under review. Those are the applications that are currently being processed through my office. They're either, might have already been to Planning Commission, and they're headed for council, for council final consideration, or they're still being reviewed and vetted internally to be scheduled for Planning Commission consideration. But those are active applications in review that will eventually be heard and decided upon by Planning Commission and City Council, probably within the next, you know, six months or so. So, those are requests to zone multifamily sites. There's 949, not sites, but units involved in those applications. We also took a little bit deeper look at what prior zoning decisions we've made to zone sites for multifamily. And in November, we looked at what we're gonna call the ones that we zoned recently, the last, you know, five to 10 years. This time, we took a little deeper dive and looked back to like even 2005, 2006, because those zonings haven't expired. And so, we, we added some units there, because they were, in fact, PAD zonings that had been approved for multifamily sites that weren't in our prior analysis. Zoned and major site plan approved, zoned and a major site plan is now under review, excuse me, that really number hasn't changed. Approved major site plan, might have been increased a little bit because of Planning Commission decisions between November and today. Under construction has not changed. It remains at 1,000 units under construction. Some are in different stages. I mean, from Agave House, that's getting close to the Cottonwood project that was just, had its grand opening last week. But we have 7,800 apartment units that have either some level of existing planning entitlements or that are actively seeking their planning entitlements. You know, our, right now, our estimate is that we need about 200 or so units per year, typically, to meet our demand, talking of demand. So, you can see, we have a lot of supply to meet our anticipated demand in the multifamily category. We really didn't do anything with the manufactured and park model analysis, because really, nothing has changed there. Same with build-to-rent. We, I think those numbers are essentially the same as that we presented to you in November. So, we mapped out all the multifamily projects, the 7,800, to understand where they are. And of course, there's a fairly good distribution of those projects throughout the community. We also did the same thing when we mapped the build-to-rent projects that have some level of approval already. And we looked at the multifamily projects for both apartments and build-to-rent in this category that are under construction. That's, that's basically the four apartment projects that are in yellow, and the three build-to-rent that are in purple. I'll back up just one second. So, you know, a lot of, I hear a lot of commentary and some comments about the amount of apartment complex, apartment complexes or units that are currently under construction. And I'm sure you have too. And it's 1,000 units, so it is a considerable amount of units. But a couple of things to keep in mind is, one, we have not, in Casa Grande, have not constructed an apartment complex in 10 years since the second phase of Tierra Point was completed in like 2012, 2013. So, 10 years since we've really built any new product. And then, we took a little, we looked historically, and what we found is that in Casa Grande, apartment construction seems to happen in some cycles. In the 85, 86 timeframe, there was actually 600 apartment units built, which is a lot for that timeframe. 2003, 2007, another 600 were built. So, the market goes through cycles where there's a demand and supply, and eventually, the demand gets high enough and other factors align, and developers build apartments to meet the community demand. So, today, you know, if we brought that graph out, we'd show that there's 1,000 that were under construction in 2023 and 2024 timeframe. So, it's not that big of an anomaly, I think, in relation to some of our historic trend. We also looked at, what do we think is realistically going to, to be proposed and be actively constructed within the next five years? So, a couple of things that are interesting on this to me is that the blue, our single-family subdivisions. So, what you can, that's really promising, what, all those, those preliminary plats that I showed you, many of those preliminary plats in the next five years will have become final plats and be ready for building new, single-family homes. So, we'll have new, single-family subdivisions that have been constructed and actively being built in over the next five years, and they'll be distributed throughout the community. You'll have some multifamily that probably only those units that have already got the planning entitlements to the level of a major site plan approval, and they can just move to the building permit approval over the next five years. With the 1,000 units that we have under construction, I don't believe that we're gonna see much permitting activity for new multifamily until those projects are completed and the market kind of looks at how well they're being rented out and filled up. In fact, this year, in 2024, we have issued no permits for new, single-family at all in the community. So, same thing probably for build-to-rent. I think the build-to-rent project will be, you know, those that own build-to-rent sites that are already zoned for build-to-rent are gonna look to see how the current three projects that we have under construction are due in the market.
Sorry, you said you haven't issued any permits for, single-family, but you meant multifamily, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, for multifamily.
I just wanted to be clear.
My bad. Thank you very much. For multifamily, zero permits for multifamily. For single-family, for single-family, in fact, we have, yes, yes.
I just wanted to be clear, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. For multifamily, single-family continues to actually do quite well, you know, I think around maybe 70 homes per month, something like that. So, I think we're gonna hit around the 750 number this year for, single-family, depending on what happens with, with interest rates. But multifamily, no. Build-to-rent, no additional build-to-rent either this year. So, the other thing I'd like to talk about is when, and I know Public Works is gonna talk about a lot of traffic improvements, but our current city code requires that when we analyze new residential developments, we require the development to provide a traffic impact analysis to show us what the traffic impact is of that, of that development. And that traffic impact analysis looks more off-site than just adjacent improvements, because our code requires that new residential developments is, is any development, that they make what we'll call half-street improvements along their frontage. So, if they're adjacent, the development's adjacent to an arterial or a collector's street, which almost all of these are, adjacent to arterials or collectors, that that development has to make frontage improvements, whether it be road widening, turn lanes, sidewalks, streetlights, et cetera, along their frontage. But they also have to look to see what their impact is off-site within a limited scope, how far off. And if the, these developments, if they create traffic problems or impact that reduces the level of service at an intersection into a level-service ERF, which is what's unacceptable for us, then they have to mitigate that impact. So, what you're, what I'm showing you here is that all the developments that have been recently approved, they have to build a traffic signal as a condition of their approval. So, you see, we'll, then we're gonna get a new signal at Ghost Ranch Road in Pinale, that's being financed by the Ghost Ranch 2, or Ghost Hollow 2 subdivision, that's under construction today. That traffic signal, I think, is gonna be about $600,000. And the developer is responsible, I believe, for about half that cost, and they'll be getting, given traffic impact offsets to reimburse them for the other half. They'll, they'll float, they'll construct the signal, they'll encounter all the costs, but we will, we'll kind of, we'll reimburse them through traffic impact fee offsets for the area, the amount of the cost beyond their fair share. You see, we're gonna have a new signal at Pelamino Parkway and McCartney, that's gonna be constructed by the Flats Apartment Complex that's going in there. We have one going at Florence Boulevard and Villa di Silo, that's being financed by the build-to-rent project that, that Cavan's building on the bungalows at Henness, I believe, or bungalows at Florence, one of the two, they're side by side. And then, we have a couple of, single-family subdivisions, Carlton Commons, the new phases of Carlton Commons, and also some new phases, some new phases of Sonoran, Sonoran Ranch. And they are gonna actually build five different signals down in that area, up here in Early, Arizona and Early, Henness and Early, and Arizona and Don. I guess it's four, I thought we were doing five there. But anyway, the reason I'm sharing this information is to show you that, in addition to city CIP projects and other city-sponsored improvements, developers are required to make roadway improvements as well, along their frontage and even off-site, to mitigate their traffic impacts, which staff looks at very carefully with every new development project that comes through our doors. In addition to the, to just looking at the supply of new residential products that are in our system and likely to be constructed in the near future, I also wanted to share with you some city code tax amendments, specifically, there are, I think, zoning code tax amendments that staff is working on, that we hope that will facilitate alternative residential construction, and more specifically, some affordable units as well. The changes fall into really three categories that we're looking at. One is to encourage the construction of accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. Two is allowing the placement of manufactured homes on individual lots for ownership in certain neighborhoods. And three is to modify the zoning regulations to facilitate the development of smaller infill lots. And I'll go in a little bit more detail on all of those. And the fourth one, I want to introduce you to and share with you is a private sector, a proposal to provide a new cottage housing product type that, that they believe will provide some more affordable housing. So, accessory dwelling is, so what is an ADU? An ADU is an independent housing unit with its own kitchen, bathroom, living and sleeping space. It's a completely independent dwelling. The units are typically smaller in size than the primary resident. They can be detached, as the little graphic shows, that they could be attached, they could be over top of garage, they could be, you know, interior to, to a unit. They're also known as casitas, mother-in-law units, granny flats, backyard cottage and carriage house. And as I mentioned, the ADU could be either detached structure or actually attached to the primary resident. We believe that ADUs can provide a good, alternative supply of affordable housing. The typical residents are likely to be seniors or young adults. They can provide for multi-generational living, they can provide supplemental income to homeowners to either help get the initial mortgage or to just provide some additional income flow. They allow for diverse and flexible housing options within a neighborhood, promotes mixed income communities, and permit a housing style that already exists in the community. We, you may already be aware of some of the used kinds of small cottages, mother-in-law units would, that do exist. Our zoning code doesn't allow them to have full kitchens, so sometimes they get built with a microwave and a small fridge and a small sink, and then after they're constructed, I suspect that some some more affordable housing. So accessory dwelling is, so what is an ADU? An ADU is an independent housing unit with its own kitchen, bathroom, living, and sleeping space. It's a completely independent dwelling. The units are typically smaller in size than the primary resident. They can be detached, as the little graphic shows, that they could be attached, they could be over top of garage, they could be, you know, interior to a unit. They're also known as casitas, mother-in-law units, granny flats, backyard cottage and carriage house. And as I mentioned, the ADU could be either detached structure or actually attached to the primary resident. We believe that ADUs can provide a good alternative supply of affordable housing. The typical residents are likely to be seniors or young adults. They can provide for multi-generational living, they can provide supplemental income to homeowners to either help get the initial mortgage or to just provide some additional income flow. They allow for diverse and flexible housing options within a neighborhood, promotes mixed-income communities, and permit a housing style that already exists in the community. You may already be aware of some of the used kinds of small cottages, mother-in-law units that do exist. Our zoning code doesn't allow them to have full kitchens, so sometimes they get built with a microwave and a small fridge and a small sink, and then after they're constructed, I suspect that some of them get converted to full kitchens. But they exist out there in the community at certain levels. We certainly want to provide a legal avenue to allow these to occur and actually to encourage them to occur, because I think that can be a very viable method of providing some additional affordable housing. We've actually done quite a bit of work on the staff level, developing the new ordinance for this. And here's what our thinking is. Our thinking is that we would allow one additional ADU in pretty much every zone district that allows for single-family homes, other than our PADs. You can see PADs are not on that list. The reason they're not on the list is because the PAD typically has CCNRs that will prevent or prohibit more than one residential structure on a lot, and the PADs would have to be amended. You could do a new PAD that allowed from scratch ADUs on each lots, that would be fine, but it's going to be a challenge, I think, to introduce them into some of our existing PADs. But in all of our single-family zone districts, I think we can do it quite easily. We're thinking that if the unit is under 675, we would go directly to building permit, no additional approval will be necessary. If it's over 675, then a conditional use permit would be required. The reason why we landed on 675 is the criteria is because today, under our code, if you're going to build an accessory structure, like a garage or workshop, whatever, if it's under 675, you're allowed to go directly to building permit. If it's over 675, you do have to get a conditional use permit. So we're keeping within the existing context of our zoning code limits in that. The accessory dwelling could not be greater in size or height than the primary structure. The setbacks would be essentially the same setbacks as we would apply to any accessory structure, which are, which are pretty, not very restrictive, I'll say that. If it's, you know, it could be close to three feet from the rear or side property line, if it's not greater than 12 feet, likely it would be five because of building code and fire code requirements for firewalls, but they could go up to three feet from the rear or side property line. If it's greater than 12 feet in height, the setbacks would be the same as the primary structure. For parking, we've landed on no park, no additional parking is necessary if 675 or under. If it's over 675 square feet, one additional parking space would be provided, needed to be shown that could be provided, which could be on-street. And lastly, no proposed owner occupancy requirements, which means that technically an investor could own the primary residence and the ADU and rent both. So in developing these ADU standards, we looked at a lot of communities who have been engaged in allowing ADUs for some time, both in Arizona and in other states, and talked to a lot of experts in the field. And these requirements really that we're proposing were the ones that most, that had been the most successful in trying to facilitate the construction of ADUs in general. I could tell you, it's not a new context, a new concept for ADUs. I actually drafted an ADU ordinance for Colorado Springs 20 years ago, and they're still operating under that very successfully. So not, we haven't done it here, but it's been done throughout, in the U.S. for many, many years. Some issues for ADUs, they need to meet building code, and that's a little harder if you're going to, you know, take an existing garage and convert it to an ADU. It's easier if you're building it from scratch. We have already adopted the tiny home building code, gives some relief that might help us out here. We can develop pre-approved ADU construction plans that we can, you know, we as the city can, can like hire an architect to create some standard plans that we can post and let people use them for free. That's, in Tucson, they're actually doing that. They have a number of ADU plans that homeowners can just use that plan if they want to, and so there's no cost involved there. It was very cost-effective for them to do that. We can create an ADU directory to help connect homeowners who might want to build an ADU with builders and other companies and organizations that can provide them with the resources they need to successfully construct an ADU. We do, you know, the impact fee cost is definitely an issue, I think. And under our new impact fee code that we're looking at bringing forth in the near future, we may have a sliding scale based on the size of a residential unit, which will help us at least have the impact fee a little less for ADUs than they are for the primary house. I already talked about CCNRs as a barrier, really can't do anything about those, but they are out there, where some HOAs simply will not allow ADUs. Some of them might be, you know, created and occupied as short-term rentals. We are working on a short-term rental ordinance as well, but again, that's, that has happened in lots of other communities where the residents for the ADUs actually have been short-term rentals. We actually do have to look at a compliance with our general plan. We have a 4.5 DU per acre density limit, and the question is, does the introduction of the ADUs put you beyond that limit? And if so, we might have to do a general plan amendment to address that as well. Need to consult with the city attorney a little bit more on that issue, but something we have identified. Onto manufactured homes in residential zoning districts. So today, under our current zoning code, manufactured homes are allowed in our R4 zone. They're allowed in our R4 zone, both in manufactured home parks, which is what we see traditionally, but they're also allowed in single lots in our R4 zone. But we don't have much R4 zoning. We have a very limited amount of R4 zoning of individual lots. So by and large, 90%, maybe higher than that, of our manufactured homes are actually built in manufactured home parks. As a housing alternative, the, I mean, those are great for that, for, you know, for those who desire those kinds of amenities and that kind of living arrangement. The downside is the homeowners don't build really any equity, right? You might buy your manufactured home, but you're not building equity. And so that's, that hurts, I think. And interestingly, as we did some research on this, we found that prior to 1999 in Casa Grande, manufactured homes were in fact allowed in a long list of subdivisions with a conditional use permit. In 1999, we repealed that ordinance, and we repealed it as far as we could tell, because we were, the city was engaging in the construction of self-help homes, and which, where we were tearing out a lot of the manufactured homes, the older ones, and putting in new self-help homes. Of course, that program is no longer with us. So our concept is that, you know, we can build, we can allow manufactured homes to be placed in certain neighborhoods of, as a successful housing type. The key really needs to be, you know, what the appearance is. So I think all of us would agree that the photos on the right, which all are manufactured homes, would be fine, right? I think the trick is going to be for us to try to articulate those design elements that we're looking for in the new manufactured homes. And we would continue to, to try to only allow them as a conditional use permit, and we're going to try to identify those neighborhoods that are traditionally older neighborhoods where we think that would be appropriate to place them, at least in the beginning. So we, our intent would be to come back with a zoning code amendment that essentially implemented this concept for your consideration. Modular homes are interesting. It's a kind of a gray area, no, really no bright line in some times between a modular home and a manufactured home. Modular homes always come in multiple pieces, we know that, they're not single wides, they could be double wides. But they, they really need to meet building code requirements. Those are all examples, real-life examples on the bottom, of modular homes. We have a new apartment complex, the Flatts 287 apartment complex, that will be modular as well. And we're working right now with the Arizona Department of Manufactured Housing to define from a building code standpoint what their responsibility is and what ours is, but they're going to be modular units, and they're going to, will allow them to be built quicker and less expensively. So we want to look at modular homes and be open to those. We need to do a little bit more research, but the concept is to allow them wherever we can build a stick-built home, as long as they meet building code. The last thing we're working on is modifying our zoning code to help facilitate the construction of some of our older infill lots that were platted at a time when, when the subdivision was created and the lot was created, that lot met the lot size, lot width, lot depth requirements of the zone district of the city, if it was created in the city. Sometimes it was created prior to the city existing, but they, the lots were, met the code requirements in place at the time that they were created. But subsequently to that, the city has rezoned them and put them in a zone district. That requires a larger lot, a lot with greater depth or greater width, and so they don't meet that. We have a provision in our code today that allows owners of those lots to go to the Board of Adjustment to get an exception to lot size, lot width, or lot depth. But it's a process the applicants have to go through, and it's a hearing. This concept is that instead of requiring the owners of non-conforming lots of record, i.e. lots that were legally created and met the zoning rules in the year that they were created, to be already automatically allowed to be given a building permit. You can see the first bullet, in those zones, they would be allowed to have a single-family residence. In the R2, they could have a single-family residence or a duplex. In the R3, they could have a multifamily, but no more than four units. So again, just acknowledging that they are legal non-conforming lots and allowing them to get a building permit without having to go to the Board of Adjustment, kind of, you know, pushing it down to an administrative review, an administrative approval to help streamline the process. Additionally, we're looking at granting administratively some setback relief that was proportional to the lot width or lot depth that they weren't meeting. So the lot wasn't quite as deep as the current code, they might get a reduced rear yard setback proportional to their lot depth deficiency, or they could get reduced side yard setbacks given their, proportional to their deficiency on the lot width. So we're looking at trying to create a process where these type of small infill lots with small structures can go directly to the building permit process without having to go to like a Board of Adjustment. If they needed relief beyond what's shown on the screen, they still would be able to go to the Board of Adjustment for formal variances and those kinds of things, but at least this sets some ground rules where they could be built on easier than under today's Lastly, I want to tell you about a proposal that we've received by a production builder to build what they call cottages. And their cottages, they would create brand-new lots of as small as 2,640 square feet. That's, that's a small lot. They would have a front setback of 24 feet to allow the parking of a car in the driveway. They would have a rear yard of 10 feet, they would have a side yards of five. They would have no garages, no carports, the parking would be in the driveway. They would be on individual lots, allows for owner occupancy. They'd kind of be like the size of the structures you're seeing in your build-to-rent projects, but on individual lots for ownership, right? I guess we've included this tonight just to sort of get, you know, your opinion on it, get your initial reaction. You know, staff, planning staff's reaction is, this could be a viable product, but it's kind of really important where it's built, to make sure it's compatible with the surrounding properties, right? But I think it's a viable alternative product. We might have to look at our PAD standards and modify those slightly to allow it, if we're going to open up the door. I have no idea what the price point is for these, but I could tell you that it's what a major production builder is thinking of proposing as a way to maybe hit the entry level, we'll call the entry-level housing market. So that, that basically summarizes what I wanted to present tonight. I do want to tell you that depending on the conversation and the input we receive tonight, staff would be looking to hold an open house for the public on sort of these proposed tax amendments that I just have been discussing with you sometime in May or June. We would like to make the same presentation that I'm making to you this evening to Planning Commission this Thursday at their May, at their May meeting, and then come back with formal tax amendments to both Planning Commission and City Council for consideration sometime later this summer. So be happy to answer any questions. Larry, do you want to take questions on this? You want to just go into the Public Works piece? Okay.
Pause with, for questions specifically on this topic from Mr. Deice before we move into roadway transportation improvements.
Paul, just comments, not really a question from me, but I think you know that I probably support everything that you just went through in terms of, you know, even having, you know, just verbal approvals versus having to go to planning and zoning, especially if it's pretty straightforward things that your staff can handle. It obviously expedites the process, helps the builder and/or developer save money. And so if they can save money, then hopefully they don't charge as much for the house, so therefore it becomes more affordable, hopefully. So I know there's no guarantee there. And then as far as modular and sticking manufactured homes onto regular platted lots in the city, I'm totally for that, as long as we have some design standards that fit the neighborhood in which it's going into. Because I think some of the manufactured homes are just as good as any stick-built house. It just has a, it has a connotation to it that it's an, it's a, you know, a mobile home, and it's not mobile anymore. And, because they're built on the same requirements as a stick-built house. And then as far as modular and/or if something creative, like you suggested, the 2,600 square feet, yeah, it would, I think, to your point, it depends on where it's going to go. I think if it's in the right area, it, obviously it has to have a cause, a certificate of assured water, so that's the first challenge. If it was in an area that had 5,000 square foot lots and they wanted to cut them in half, basically, that's a possibility, because I think they could probably get that done through ADWR, through Arizona Department of Water. And, but yeah, I think if the, again, having the right design standards so that it looks good from the street, it's not too terribly crowded, although that's pretty, pretty dense housing. But there's, there's got to be some designs that can be incorporated, I think, that would make that work. So, and again, some, you know, enough open space too, when, when there's, you know, if I lived in a neighborhood like that, I'd like to have some open space and someplace to take my dog or whatever. And so I think that there's something that could be worked out. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Lisa?
No, and I like that we're being proactive and finding ways to streamline the processes to make, you know, the, you know, viable housing products in our community. And I like, I know at the beginning, Paul, you talked about, you know, in conclusion, really, we're trying to focus on the areas that there's a, there's a need, and that's supporting the Lytec-funded homes, you know, housing products, you know, our senior population. We know we have a very low supply, when you went over that, those numbers with us, we know the senior population, of course downtown, so we can bring more business to the downtown area, and then just overall housing and affordable housing for our community. So, so I suppose, you know, as far So, um, so I suppose, you know, as far as moving forward, because I know when we talked about having this study, we were going to see, you know, where are we going to go in the future? So now we've seen the supply and the demand, and I love, you know, your, you know, proactive approach to how we can streamline all of this. So, um, so is that where you're going to go forward? Larry kind of pointed, so are we, are we moving to that next as far as, so what does that mean? Are we going to focus on these, these particular areas since we know that we have, you know, the, the supply coming and, and everything, you know, or, or, or are we going to expand, you know, I don't know, I guess, I'm just trying to figure out particularly where, where we are moving forward with, um, especially for our zoning, our future zoning.
Well, for our, our future zoning, on the supply side, I think I've made the case that, you know, you don't have a zoning problem, right? You don't have a problem that you don't have enough zoned areas. You have plenty of zoned areas to allow all kinds of different housing products to be built, right? You have some barriers that I just talked about trying to address with, with some of those infill projects, but, um, and we know where, you know, because of our, where things have improved, we know where development's going to occur, right? And the beauty of that is it's almost all infill, right? The one thing that was kind of interesting is we are going to get a lot of residential construction south of Florence, just to the west of the interstate, right? In the area between the interstate and Pier, right, north of, north of Early. So there's, there's, there's going to be a lot of activity in that area, which hasn't historically had a lot of activity. So we know where development's going to occur. And I, Public Works is going to talk about the types of things that they're going to do to, they're working on to try to make sure that we have the right traffic infrastructure, uh, transportation infrastructure in place to accommodate that development. So, but I'm not sure if I answered your question on that.
Yeah, no, that, that is, that's what, and then, and then we're going to try to focus on these pop, those, these particular areas when it comes to seniors, the Lytec-funded, okay? And then you also talked about impact fees and your sliding, you know, the possibility of a sliding scale.
Yes.
So will that scale maybe even include kind of going on the, on the, the low end of impact fees? I mean, when there's really no impact, you know, do we, if the infrastructure is all there, you know, it's a way to encourage, you know, development and people to go into these infill lots. So when you talk about sliding scales, is it going to be, could it be maybe no impact fee?
I can't address that. I, I think the short answer is probably no. I think there needs to be some impact fee, but I think we cannot consider the level of impact of infill versus greenfield development, right? Because, you know, for example, on wastewater, it might, you know, the wastewater that's created still has to be treated, still has to be transmitted to the plant, right? The traffic is, even though there might be a local street there, the new dwellings are going to feed into their arterial network and drive improvements there. Police and fire are still going to have to respond to the new residents, whether they're on an infill lot or not. So, but the concept we're working on right now is kind of that the impact of a 5,000 square foot house is different than the impact of a 1,000 square foot house, just because the number of occupants is different in those two scenarios, right? So we are looking at those with the, and my, my, my hope is that we can, you know, have the lowest amount of impact fee as we can on the, for the small structures to help facilitate those.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Bob, you had a question?
Yes, uh, Paul, under, under, I think the ADU, um, process, is there anything in there that would allow developers to offer a multi-generation home? And the reason that I ask is that, um, we've had clients that ended up in Gilbert and, and Queen Creek because they're allowed up there and they, and they, they seem very practical. I mean, if a family has a situation of an older, uh, family member, or even a developmentally disabled family member that wants a little independence, and they, and they, they tend to have, uh, separate quarters with a full kitchen, and I think I was told at one time that, that Casa Grande's, uh, um, rules don't allow for two kitchens, and that's what the, what the holdup was. I don't know if that's, any of that's accurate, but.
So much of what you said is very accurate. Let me just, um, summarize on that. So first off, the short answer is yes. The ADU can certainly be attached and can be a multi-generational unit, and the multi-generational unit can have a separate access outdoor, you know, and entrance, can have separate kitchen, right? And could be, you know, um, the occupant could be an extended family, or maybe not. It could be that the owner of the home lives there and, and rents the eight, the, the extra unit as a short-term rental, or to some college student, or whoever, right? So it doesn't have to be multi-generational, but it will allow for multi-generational. So you can see here, um, you know, that on the bottom it says ADU can be attached or detached, so it can be attached, that's what we're talking about, incorporated into the structure itself. The ADU unit would be smaller than the primary house, so, um, you know, the house might be 2,400 square feet and the ADU might be 800 square feet that's attached. In this photo right here, the house to the right side of the photo is actually a house in Casa Grande that is a multi-generational house. We had a developer who was doing a PAD, and in his PAD, he asked to be allowed to have multi-generational, and we approved the PAD with it.
Oh, very good.
So we have built some. Uh, this would allow for additional, uh, multi-generational housing to be built. Yes.
Yeah, we have them like in McCartney Ranch has them, but they just don't have a full kitchen. It has a refrigerator and a, and a microwave and a separate entrance.
Okay. Is that because of code?
Yes, yes, that's why they don't have a full kitchen.
So can we change?
That's what he's talking about doing.
This code will change that, yes, absolutely.
As part, as part of this.
That's what he's talking about doing.
Okay, I appreciate that. Uh, my other comment was about mobile homes. I don't really have a question, but.
Manufactured.
Manufactured.
Or mobile homes.
Okay. Um, my opinion, and I know I'm only one of seven up here, so, uh, my opinion is the, the best-case scenario for mobile homes is in a controlled, uh, park or neighborhood where they're renting the space but owning the home. It gives the park a lot of control on making sure those are, those are kept up and that it's presentable. I'm worried about, uh, our existing residents that live in a traditional stick-built home neighborhood, and this new process will allow somebody to park a mobile home across the street from them. If it's on their own land, we, we don't have a lot of control over it, and I, I think that's high potential for a problem. So that's just my opinion, I mean, I'm not.
But they're not mobile homes, Bob, they're not mobile homes.
Manufactured.
I know.
They're, they're ground set, a lot of these, and, and some of the design criteria could be that it has to be ground set, so that it sits on a foundation just like a regular house. And if you look at that top picture that's in there, that has a whole wraparound porch. That doesn't look like a manufacturer, or a mobile home. It's not a mobile home, it's a manufactured home. It's just made somewhere else.
I'm concerned about it. I'll leave it at that.
And, and maybe just to address, and I share those concerns, right? But I also believe what the mayor is saying is that, that the, the key to success is in the design of the structure. And we will, we will be working hard on the design elements that must be included, so we don't have like a traditional, you know, trailer, single-wide trailer with a flat roof and just all metal. But for, beyond that, we're still going to propose that it be a conditional use permit, which will allow a public hearing, uh, for the, the surrounding neighbors to come and express any concerns they might have to the Planning Commission. Uh, and one of the criteria for a CUP is no adverse impact, right? So we'll look very, under our proposal, we will look very closely at adverse impact and make sure, and won't approve them, or recommend approval, if there are any.
I'll make another observation. We, we have two communities in town of manufactured homes that are side-by-side. One, they own the lot, they own the house, it's not gated. The other one is gated, they rent the lot, and they're, they're under the supervision of the, of the park. I, I would challenge you to go take a look at them, they're different. You got many vehicles lined up in front of the house, under the awning, uh, kind of some weird colors used on the, on the houses. It's, it's not, it's not bad, but, but I worry it might be someday. Just an observation.
Donna?
I think Matt was first.
Matt?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, interesting thing we bring up here is affordable housing, and, and as a city, I, I've been to a lot of seminars and training on this, and we don't, we don't build houses as a city, but we do zone, and it's our responsibility to help the zoning, to help them be affordable, yet, that's a really relative term because it's a market condition. As someone who has two daughters in their twenties, um, the stuff, affordable is a very relative term, right? Because you see what these rents are now and what everything, and it's, it's, it's cheap, but, uh, it's not cheap. But hopefully with more of these, um, multifamily developments coming in, it will reduce the rents on some of the older ones maybe, and that's kind of our goal. But the interesting thing about that to me too is where you have the, the graph of how many we built in the eighties and then the early two thousands, I mean, 600, and today we're building 1,000, so we're not, we're going through that cycle. And again, I want to remind, this is a market, market-driven thing, you know, and, and, and people, they put a lot of time and money into studying this, and we have to offer different types of living situations for all type of people in our town, so, um, I just really found that fascinating because I had no idea that we had built that many in those years, you know, but just right now, we're catching up on those, and I think you said it, I, I, I mean, I think you had the right thought when you said, what's being built right now is probably going to be it for a while until we see how, and the, the owners of these developments see how they're going to rent and how it's going to work out until they get full. So I really liked that. And then, um, as for encouraging, you know, another way to do that is encouraging infill, um, and we did that downtown, we had a, we have a great project downtown, we worked with the Chicago's Port La Casa for many years, got to the end and then it didn't work out. But that's the kind of stuff we're looking for as a city, to help that move forward, you know, so, um, there's a lot of stuff going on, and it's just, you have to find the right developer with the right project in the right place, and, and we're always working at that as a city, and just, you know, there's a lot that goes on until they finally come to fruition.
And a good fit.
Yeah.
And a good fit.
With the right place.
Right, right, right.
Just like with the cottages, again, interesting concept.
Yes.
But you said it, it's got to be in the right place, you know, want to see how that goes, but I think to build the rents will kind of show us how popular that might be too, because they're very similar size, I would think, and stuff like that. Um, and then we're probably, we can talk about streets later, right? So I'll wait until Dwayne and those guys go, you hit on a little bit, but, um, you know, it's just one of those things of, of all the stuff, so the condos, that was, that was another one too. We don't have a lot of those. Is there a size limit on condos, or?
No, there's not. They could be very large or very small, depending what the builder wants to build.
I kind of think the cott, the cottages would almost be like a condo to me, right? Except not attached, with a smaller footprint.
Yeah, I mean, the condominiums are attached units, but they could be designed to be, uh, like walk-ups, like acacia loffses, or they could just be traditional townhomes, side-by-side townhomes, right? There's, you know, architecturally, you could do them, you know, a lot of different ways, but they're all owned, can be purchased individually, that's the key.
Mm-hmm. And so.
But they're owned.
Yep. And then to, to Bob's point, I, I see where you're going with that, Bob, and it's something that we'll just have to take a look at, but I like the CUP because then it's a very case-by-case basis, instead of just saying, you can have a manufactured home wherever, you know, because I've seen a couple of places, like individual lots, you know, one in a hundred where it might work in certain neighborhoods, so we'll just have to see how it goes. But to be proactive and to offer that is kind of our, that's where we go with our affordable housing and our, and our diversity of housing, is to make sure that we at least offer it to see if it's going to work out.
It's an option.
Yep. And then, uh, and the, again, back to the affordable, like we have the Lytec projects going on, but it's still a market, market condition, and that's, that's what we go down to is, you know, these, these developers are in business to make money, um, so that's where that goes. And then the impact fees for the infills, um, we did reduce our impact fees about four years ago, I think, four or five years ago, we reduced the impact fees, and I think impact fees wouldn't be the way to go so much on those, but there's other concessions that you can make in an infill project, I think. Uh, you know, like maybe parking, you know, less parking restrictions, or, you know, open space types, you know, different stuff that we could help, help them out. But the impact is always, you know, we, everyone here paid for the sewer lines already, and, and you know, they've got to pay for theirs as well, and, and the garbage trucks and the fire trucks and all that, so. But, um, you know, the sliding scale for the ADU, I agree with that because, you know, it's not that much more of an impact, it's already been paid on that lot. So I appreciate, you know, you thinking about this and bringing it up so that we can move forward and find, you know, some good, good solutions for everybody.
Donna?
You know, and it's very timely. Paul, one of the things you did, you really did articulate the fact of right location, right design, and, and all of that means, no matter which one we're talking about, um, I'm, I'm really impressed by the infill. The ADU intrigues me, and I think you had mentioned Tucson.
Yes.
You know, had, had something, I would love to see some documentation or how they, you know, how they handled it, and I know that you had also mentioned about having a guide of some type. I think that that's just good customer service for us to have as a city. I, the mother-in-law suite, or I think you say granny pad or something. Yeah. Uh, I think that, you know, one of the things that I've learned along the way is that those, those things are needed because our families have, are forever changing of what they look like. And I know that when we did the housing forum last, last week, and I think Lisa was, um, emceeing that, one of the things that I remember them talking about, especially through the college, was that, you know, they're having problems with some of our CAC students finding places to live, and this would just be such a great opportunity, especially, you know, if there was an older couple that had a mother-in-law suite that, you know, could be a sister, you know, something, a student-in-law suite, so to speak. Um, the last thing I will say is that out of all this, I really, um, encourage that an open house for the public, because I think that we need to make sure we get the right information to the public, and the best way to do that is to have some type of an open house, where we can have the concepts and have people there to talk so that they have an understanding. And to the mayor's point and to Bob's point, you know, just, you know, the whole idea of when people, whether we want to call it manufactured homes, or trailers, or whatever, to have, you know, something put in the middle of a neighborhood that is, you know, stick, uh, stick-home driven, it could be very much, those houses might even look better, you know, than what's there. But I think the concept of making sure the public understands what that is, is really important. Thank you.
I just appreciate, um, going over this with us and just sharing. Thing I think is having options. We have a lot of options, right? And, and we also have to make sure that, and I think the mayor said it, having the right fit for those infill lots. Uh, we just like to just throw anything and everything there, but it should be a, a right fit for our city. And I think under that general plan that you started out with, it has those guidelines to help us with those right fits. And so I just think we need to make sure that we just stay on top of it and, and continue to supply the options for also the people that are coming. And I know there was a concern that you had in regards to that number, I think it was a 975 number, whatever. But we're growing, and I think we're going to be all right.
Yeah, and I hope that the legislature, state legislature doesn't get in the middle of it, because if they do, then it won't matter what we're talking about here, because they'll be able to put anything anywhere on any lot, lot, so.
That would be bad.
And then we'll be out of the, uh, that game.
So mayor, to that point, you know, I do monitor those, that legislation and those bills that are being proposed, and if one, if an ADU law gets passed, obviously we'll review what we're doing to make sure that we incorporate and comply with any new legislation that is enacted.
Right, I'm not worried about their ADU law, that one's, that one's minor compared to the other ones.
Right.
That have been proposed. Uh, anyway, yeah, thank you, thank you for this, Paul, this is good stuff, and, uh, especially in line with the, uh, the housing study that you guys completed, um, back in end of 2000, or 2023, so appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just make two closing comments on this particular topic, and then I'll use that as a segue to move on, uh, into the transportation. And number one is that you, you, I, I heard tonight a bit about housing mix and about housing, the diversity of housing, we've talked a lot about these various amendments. I do want to remind the council that we've, we're going to take even a bit of a more, a deeper dive with, uh, through, through grant funding that we received, that, uh, that will be, will that, uh, that will be, will be doing additional study and analysis that I think will help the mayor and council, uh, really focus on an overall mix, an overall, uh, uh, housing count in each, and so, uh, of the various types. Uh, as, as Paul has pointed out with the amendments, obviously there is a process and we've heard, we've heard, uh, the idea of open houses and the like. And so we'll put together our public outreach component of, of the various amendments that will be coming, uh, before the mayor and council. But as, as has been duly noted, the, the reality is these are policy changes that ultimately, uh, are being proposed and the mayor and council will consider those. I want to start the transportation dialogue as Kevin and Paul probably trade, are you guys going to change trade places or? Okay, go ahead to the podium. Um, is, I, I, I think it's important to note, because we get, we get a lot of questions, staff does, and I know the mayor and council does as well. And there's a lot of comments made that at least in, in, if our policy related to transportation improvements for decades has been that we're going to let development ultimately pay their way of the infrastructure, right? You heard Paul talk a bit about the requirements, uh, of the, uh, frontage improvements and the like. And, and we occasionally will be asked about, uh, these areas where you go from a four lane to a two lane, back to a four lane. Typically, when you look to either side, you'll see that there's no development in that area, right? And so, um, so this year, uh, we, we have, we have been listening and, uh, we, we certainly understand that there may be needs, uh, a need for us to be, take a different approach as a staff. And included in the proposed fiscal year twenty-five budget is nearly sixty-five million dollars of, of roadway improvements. Those are being financed through a variety of, of sources and we'll talk a little more about that. Uh, and there's a specific seven million dollar package that is going to focus on, uh, what I would consider to be some intersection areas as well as, uh, the expansion of, of various corridors, uh, many of which that Paul is, is talking, uh, outlined where, uh, where the growth is transpiring today. And so, as we move through this, uh, I wanted to, again, just make that point about the policy as, uh, that we've had over the years. And, and really that policy has been established primarily to ensure that development pays its own way, that existing taxpayers have paid their share. And ultimately, uh, the city of Casa Grande has worked diligently for a number of decades to ensure that we are not imposing the cost of, of future growth on the existing taxpayers. And so with that being said, I'll turn it over to Kevin and his team who have probably about another hour of presentation, Mr. Mayor and Council, so bear with us.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, uh, City Council. Um, as Larry mentioned, uh, seven million dollar project, that budget, obviously we have a lot of other projects that.
There we go.
So we'll get started again. Um, Mayor and Council, thank you. Um, as Larry mentioned, in the budget, we, we had quite a few projects as part of our CIP, uh, request for this year. But there was the one project that was the seven million dollar project and we didn't have a lot of detail at that time, we were still working on that. Um, I kind of coined it, our, our rapid response effort to the hotspots throughout our community where we know we have traffic congestion, not associated with one single project, but a combination of projects and a combination of infill. And we've looked at those areas and they may not be directly impacted by a single development that needs to make improvements, but multiple developments, maybe not close, maybe, you know, a few blocks away. So, with that effort, we've, uh, identified a list of projects and, uh, Dwayne Itell, Monir Zaman and Mac Harmon are going to go through this, uh, defining what those projects are in more detail. And then obviously we'll have plenty of time at the end to, uh, answer any questions. But it's in direct relationship to everything that Paul mentioned, where that development is happening. And I think when you look at the overlay, uh, that we'll be showing you here in just a minute, you'll see that there's a mesh there. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Dwayne.
Could you go back to that slide, Mac? So this slide is in the twenty thirty general plan. And it shows all the arterials and minor arterials and parkways and so on that we have planned. But we have projects planned out to twenty forty-five. But we're not going to go that far tonight, we're just going to talk about the next couple of years. So this are the road, roadway and intersection improvements that we want to build in FY twenty-five and some in twenty-six. You see the legend over on the left shows, uh, the diamonds are, uh, the triangle is federally funded safety projects. We've got, uh, about a million dollars or so to, to do those two intersections partially. Then the green circles are intersection capacity improvements, adding left turn lanes, that, that sort of thing. And the red squares are intersection improvements that are not out of that seven million dollars, they're in future CIP projects.
Here.
Okay. Thank you. So this slide shows the, all the projects that we already planned for fiscal year twenty-five, excuse me. So if I can walk you through the legends, at the beginning you can see that there's two, uh, one of the signal projects at Sentinel Boulevard and Pinal Avenue. This is a federal funded projects. Next one is a hawk signal at Pinal Avenue and Viola Street. Then blue triangle shows the safety projects and green triangle shows also safety projects on Florence Boulevard. Then Pentagon shows on Trickle and Jimmy Carr and intersection improvement and railroad crossing improvements. Then red diamond, a roundabout projects on Florence Street and Ash Avenue. Then red cross sign, it shows Thornton Road and Cottonwood Lane, intersection improvement with addition of a town lane. Now, blue star shows town lane installation at Arizona Road and Florence Boulevard. So these are specific intersection improvement projects planned for fiscal year twenty-five. Also, we have roadway improvement projects. You can see that on the top is the McCartney Road projects from Pinal to I-ten. We have Pinal Tech Park projects, that is Athington and Clayton Road projects. We have Thornton Road widening projects from Peters to Highway eighty-four. We have Peters Road projects from Burris to Thornton Road. And we have pavement preservation projects on Hacienda Road from Courtson to Florence. This is not a capacity improvement, but the preservation projects.
So you can see in the green on that slide, too quick, Mac, uh, it's the projects that Paul was talking about earlier. So a lot of these, you can see where they're in the general area of where the development's going.
This slide shows the recent projects we have completed or currently underway. So if I go through the legends, the circle shows intersection improvement on Thornton and Peters Road. We have already completed that. Then triangle, blue triangle on McCartney and Pier, we have added a town lane. Then light green square on Sunland Gin and Jimmy Carr, we have installed new signal. And besides, you can see that some roadway projects, like Pier Road, median landscaping project already completed. And Pinal Tech Park projects on Clayton and Athington is currently underway. And the Thornton Road widening projects, uh, from Peters to Highway eighty-four already completed. Besides, if you can go back, we have the adaptive traffic signal, phase four we call, is currently underway, almost at the end of completion. And we are adding eight more signal to the adaptive system to connect to our tra, transportation management center at NOC. Next slide please. This slide shows the adaptive traffic signal. So, blue rectangle, blue square shows existing traffic signal that is already operating. And the pink diamond, you can see those are under current projects, almost at the end of completion. Red triangle, the two projects we al, already completed in coordination with the developers. And those are not connected yet, but we have planned to connect to our TMC. Once those are completed, we will have real-time capacity to see the traffic, how those are flowing, or if we need to intervene at any time.
We'd like to add that any new signal we built has equipment in it to connect to our, our traffic, uh, center out at the NOC and has the capability of being added to our adaptive signal system.
So I would like to give, um, Mayor and Council a little bit of background. Mr. Itell and Mr. Zaman are going to go over some of the, the intersections that we're looking at. But as part of this presentation, we did take, um, short one, about one minute videos of the intersections from an aerial perspective. So you can kind of see how they're operating today. These videos were taken on, on Tuesday, April sixteenth, between hours of two to four PM. So definitely not during peak hour conditions, but, uh, kind of a reflection of how they work in the early afternoon. And so the first one is going to be at, uh, Courtson and Pier.
Yep.
So you're looking, uh, from the northeast to southwest, so you're looking down towards the, uh, um, rec center out there. And, uh, that was the area that the apartment complex was, uh, being proposed. And the, uh, area that really experiences a lot of backup, both those east, west, north and south lanes, um, back up quite a bit, uh, during rush hour and specifically right when the, uh, traffic heads to each of the schools that surround this intersection in all four directions.
This slide shows the intersection of Courtson Road and Pier Road intersection. And we are planning to increase the left turn bay because there is, traffic backs up and blocks the through lane. So we'll lengthen the town lane, that will help to reduce the congestion. Next one, you can see the same situation, traffic backs up because of short, uh, left turn bay. This is not bound direction, we'll extend the bay and increase the left turn lane.
So we'll move on to the next intersection. This is at Rodeo and Pinal. And we'll highlight some of the conditions that are happening there. The main project focus on this area and it'll, it'll take a second to buffer here, so it'll be a little bit clearer image. But the north and south left turn lanes tend to back up and cause overflow onto the, onto Pinal Avenue. And you, you'll, you'll see some of that start to happen in, in the video, you can kind of see it in this, in this area.
We all know people drive fast on Pinal and they're driving down the through lane and all of a sudden they see a bunch of cars stopped in the lane and they're not expecting it. It's caused a number of safety problems.
And it's also important to note, uh, for the public that Pinal is a state highway, it is not a city facility. But we are moving forward with, uh, a recommendation for this project to help mitigate the impacts to our traveling public, uh, on their roadway system.
This slide shows the intersection of Pinal and Rodeo Drive. And you can see very short left turn lane for southbound direction on Pinal Avenue. And our plan is to extend the town lane so that we can separate the turning vehicle from the through lane.
So this intersection is going to be, uh, Courtson and Pinal, very similar to the, uh, problems we're experiencing on Rodeo and Pinal. Um, additionally, the left turn lane on the, uh, eastbound travel direction, um, experiences some pretty heavy backup. And you can kind of see that in this video where you have this truck here and it's kind of hard to see, but it is crossing a double yellow line to stack into that, that left turn lane.
If you drive on that at the right time of day, there's literally twenty cars in that left turn. I mean, I count them when I drive by, so that's very mild.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
More now with the construction.
Yep.
And a lot of that traffic is, uh, coming from our industrial area with all the new jobs that we've created.
Yeah, it's always at the, like, between three o'clock and five o'clock.
These folks are heading back to, uh, the valley and we're trying to create the housing product so that they stay here.
That's right. Nice, Kevin.
Way to roll it.
That's right. You need to put those signs, if you lived here, you'd be home now, right?
This slide shows the intersection of Pinal Avenue and Courtson, you just watched the video. So our plan is to extend the left turn bay so that we can accommodate more vehicle for the turning movement.
I, I would like to add, this cost also does include the restriping of the, of the intersection as well as a slurry seal to help with pavement preservation.
How many cars will that hold, do you think? The left turn?
It's a question again.
I think it extends.
How many cars?
Okay.
Oh, how, how many cars?
It extends it to at least six more cars.
Six more.
We tried to build this within, pretty much within the roadway that we had. The whole idea of all these are what can we build quickly and inexpensively?
And I probably should have noted earlier, you know, this rapid response project is also rapid complete. These are projects that we believe we can comfortably complete within twelve to fifteen months, if given the go-ahead.
Make it so.
So this intersection is going to be Pinal and Cottonwood. Um, this is an intersection that I'm sure you're all familiar with as far as industrial traffic is, industrial traffic is concerned. Definitely one of the main routes that, uh, truck traffic is going to be taking to get out to Pinal. And we find that it tends to stack into that left turn lane as well.
Mm-hmm, and then this backs up.
So this isn't the peak hour, but you're going to start seeing trucks backing up anyway.
So you can see that there.
About fifteen minutes from this, they'd be way back there.
Yeah, so that's a jam. Trying to get a QT.
Yeah.
So this slide shows our plan for the Cottonwood Lane and Pinal Avenue intersection. You just watched the video. So, we see a lot of backups from our industrial traffic on Cottonwood Lane. And on top of that, we see left turning vehicle from the QT towards the Pinal Avenue. And that creates a safety hazard and also operational problems. To mitigate that, we are proposing a raised medium on Cottonwood Lane that will solve our traffic operational and safety problem.
Another issue with this is left turners going into the QT off of, uh, Cottonwood. You'll see some, look at that. You'll see some, look at that car right there where he's showing the cursor. It stopped to make a left turn into the QT and that can cause a backup behind them. That if he wasn't there, everybody could move out.
Have we talked to the business owners about this yet?
No, and that's one of, you know, this is just a proposal. We would have to do a lot of public involvement.
Yeah, and I, I've seen in the past, I've said, I know. I've said, and also this little daycare center right here too. But I've seen, said in the past, we need to come up, so trucks can use all of the roads, I know, it's legal, but we need to encourage them. And I know we want to work with the new places out there to have the trucks take Thornton Road to the eight, to the 10. And that's what was supposed to happen years ago, but that would solve a lot of our problems too, if we can come up with some sort of policy or speed limit or weight limit to help the trucks route, you know, have a truck route. So that it helps the citizens and also helps the trucks too, so they're not having to cut these curbs and make these, you know, you know, all these tight turns and everything.
And I see so many of those trucks coming up that way and they're waiting for the cars to back up to give them enough room to get out of there. It's very dangerous.
So, this intersection is Treckel and Cottonwood. And here you are facing, I guess that would be your facing to the northeast. The project here will focus mostly on the raised median on this section. You can't see it in this video and, and our traffic engineer will, will describe it a little bit better when we go to the next slide, but there is a left turn bay here that was put there with plans for other development before this complex came in. That left turn bay doesn't serve any function today because it's a left turn into, into nowhere at this point. And so this, this left turn bay could be extended to accommodate additional traffic.
This is the slide for the Cottonwood Lane and Treckel intersection. And as Mac mentioned, that the left turn bay is too short. So our plan is to extend the left turn bay so that more car can be accommodated on the Next one is the Florence Boulevard and Peart intersection improvement. We did not have any video on this one, but we are improving the intersection on all three directions as part of our rapid reaction project that Kevin mentioned. And on another side, we'll have a safety projects. So this slide shows the westbound direction left turn lane. So it is too short and we are extending the left turn bay. This is, again, on Peart Avenue, the southbound direction, we are extending the left turn bay.
So what does that do for, I know that that Walgreens is right there, if we extend that out?
So we won't impact their left turn in, that'll still exist. All we're doing is, we're taking out the, the existing median that is, is wide there and keeps cars from being able to queue up. We're going to be adding several car queue lengths of additional pavement there. And there's no landscaping in that median there, so we're not getting rid of any landscaping.
This, this one again, Florence Boulevard and Peart on southbound direction. So we are extending left turn bay for this one as well.
So this is part of the Quartzon and Peart intersection, as well as the scallop streets that the traffic engineer and city engineer are going to talk about. And then go forward to the part that we're probably most focused on and that we're proposing as part of this project. So here you're proceeding westbound, and this is over Quartzon Road. And this is Quartzon and, and the Peart intersection. And so this is a flyover showing the current conditions of the roadway. You can see where parts of Quartzon here to the west are built out and where they're not currently built out. And so part of that scallop street section of this project would be building out these, these lanes to their, their full build-out. And we'll go through this, it'll just proceed. You can see areas where we would probably want to do this project in phases to improve the, the sections as they are here, but to the same areas that we've already flown over.
So the scallop street project is not a FY25 project, it's future CIP after 25, other than up by the Peart intersection. Seven million dollars doesn't go real far.
This is the, here's the Agave House Apartments in Florence, or Quartzon and Treckel. And you could see where, just as Larry had stated earlier, where develop, development happened on this side, the road got built and it didn't happen on the south side there. And that's what's causing those, those changes in the roadway geometry.
This slide shows the, our proposal for fixing the scallop road for the Quartzon Road. And this is from Peart up to Colorado or beyond Colorado on the west side up to Maria. So this will have the full two lane, through lane, and on top of that, we'll have a turn lane, additional right turn lane, but those will be part of future CIP. At this time, as part of our rapid projects, we'll extend the left turn bay by lengthening the left turn bays.
Can't do it now, huh?
We can extend the left turn lane and maybe put the right turn lane in there with this, not the scallop streets.
We're going to put a sewer line in there, can't we do it all at the same time? We're going to tear the street up anyway. I'm just saying.
So this is an intersection, this is the Cottonwood and Mission Parkway intersection. This is an intersection that we know has been approaching the need. It warrants a traffic signal and it was a, a intersection that when we met with the police department, they had informed us that a lot of accidents and, and things that could be improved with a signal there. And so we monitored it and have included it as part of this project to hopefully signalize it.
So a signal instead of a three-way stop?
Correct.
And we're able to do that with just a couple poles on the north side. So it should be fairly an expensive project.
This year?
Yes, we can do it. 25.
25, not 24?
I'm always talking FY.
Oh, so that could be this year. It could be in 24.
Could be this calendar year.
Okay. I feel better now.
Well, for example, we're working with the city of Phoenix, they're doing a lot, they're doing away with a lot of their, replacing a lot of their signal poles. We might be able to get a couple poles from them.
Perfect. Keep talking, Dwayne.
That's called the Matt Herman effort.
That's right. Recycle.
This is the slide for the location, you saw the video, for the Cottonwood Lane and Mission Parkway intersection. And we are planning to install the signal.
You saw that estimate there. If we get the poles and everything works out right, that's probably way too high. But we always want to be safe to start with.
And understanding that a normal full signal intersection is anywhere from $450,000 to $600,000, so it's fairly cheap. So the last slide here, and I'll probably turn this over to Larry real soon here, but these are the different funding mechanisms that are out there that we may want to look at taking advantage of. And were you prepared to talk about this? I'll, I'll let Larry take the lead and fill in if I need to.
And really, the, the message that I wanted to, to send everyone is to give, is to give some context in, in, in terms of financing. And the mayor and council just heard a seven million dollar package. And to give everybody a context about, from a revenue stream perspective, from the half cent Penal County road tax that is, that is scheduled to expire in 2026, and our highway user revenue fund, we, from both of those sources, we average about seven million dollars a year to do all of the, the various improvements, street maintenance, staff salaries to, to handle the, the work that gets done by the street, by the street crews. So essentially, you can see that, that we have to have other financing sources to ultimately achieve bigger, bigger projects and to, and if we were to exchange the practice of having development pay their way, which we're not proposing to do this evening, that we would have to have other sources. And I want to talk about a few of those with the mayor and council this evening. But before I get into those, I do want to let the council know that how we have elected to pay for other projects are, are through funding mechanisms similar to the construction sales tax fund. We've used improvement districts in the past, that may be something that may become viable. We're hearing more and more developers wanting to potentially evaluate improvement districts, which requires city council authorization. We, you, I know the mayor and council is aware of the road improvement payback code provisions. Cottonwood Lane was actually expanded, the capacity was expanded several years ago. The way that particular mechanism works is that the city would, would essentially pay, would pay for the improvements upfront. The developers, if there would be, if there were, if there were development that would occur in the next 10 years, then they had ultimately paid their fair share of the linear costs of that roadway improvement. So that will likely be something that the mayor, that the city staff is recommending to mayor and council in some of the projects. Obviously, you heard tonight about a couple of the grants. Typically, those are, those are smaller safety grants is what we have been very successful at achieving. But this last year, we did through the federal-directed congressional, federal-directed funding, we did get fundings for projects such as Cottonwood and Thornton Road and for the roundabout that is on Ash Street as well.
Wasn't the signal that, signal about?
Centennial?
Yeah.
Yes, the, the signal at Centennial is also funding that we'd received from a couple of years ago. And so what we have found with, with those types of grants is that they're not going to pay 100% of the capital costs, but we, we typically are seeing somewhere between 40 and 60% of the capital costs that, that ultimately are, are, we're, we're getting through the federal government. There are some other alternatives if, if the mayor and council really would like to accelerate roadway capacity expansions and, and the like. We have the opportunity to, to actually look at our development impact fees and, and likely see some level of an increase if we were to study that, to study the development impact fees, simply because of the new costs that we're recognizing today with the infrastructure projects. There's an opportunity to increase primary property taxes. We have, we have a very limited increase that we can make on the primary property taxes. I know the mayor had asked a question at the budget meeting specifically about what our maximum levy amount is, and, and we did do that analysis, mayor, it's a dollar seven. And I know the mayor and council is aware that we are going to be recommending 96 cents per hundred. Our maximum under statutory limits is a dollar seven per hundred. And any amount that would be in excess of that would require voter approval. General obligation bonds, obviously our voters were, were very gracious and, and supported us on our question number four to, for general obligation bonds that ultimately is going to pave McCartney Road between I-10 and Penal and, and Rodeo between, or excuse me, Treckel between Rodeo and Val Vista. Again, that, that is repaid through secondary taxes and we'll look to utilize those. And then obviously, community facilities districts, which is a, really a funding mechanism and a tool that developers could use for reimbursement. We could also be reimbursed through some level of that if those are improvements. And so, this is not, I-
Can you, I only share this because it's important that as we're having a discussion on transportation and, and you've heard the numbers that we're proposing for fiscal year 25 budget, I want to give some context to the revenue streams that we're utilizing that's available and ultimately what might be available if we want to accelerate roadway expansions and like even more so.
Larry, what, what is that 11 cents, how much would that get us?
I believe it was $685,000.
That's it?
One of those turn lanes.
Yeah.
Yeah, one left turn lane. And a lot, and a lot of headache.
Does mayor and council have any specific questions for Kevin and his team related to the proposed projects? Obviously, the mayor and council will be here for a budget, as you consider that on May 6th, next Monday night. As I said, we're, we're looking at improvements along this $65 million that is being proposed and, and we highlighted the $7 million project.
Yeah, just if we could maybe get a timeline on some of the projects. I understand it's, it's fluid, but if we could get an estimated timeline on each of the projects would be helpful, only from the standpoint that we get asked a lot.
Yeah, so each month, we give you an update on our, our project list, the changes that have occurred. Yeah, and we highlight that in Larry's report to council.
Maybe if it, if we could narrow it down to just roads.
But what we could do is for these projects, we can do a, a separate report and provide that to Larry to get out to council.
It doesn't have to be separate on each project, but just, just, you know, under, just a one pager on each of the, you know, that lists each project. That would be helpful. And the only other thing that I saw that, or that I didn't see was I know that I, I've been asked a lot about some sort of a signal or something at Hacienda and Florence Street, Florence Boulevard.
Boulevard.
Just to put it on your radar. I'm not asking for an update tonight. Since we're talking about roads and traffic.
And just to note that that is a state highway, so we have no jurisdiction there.
Can we, can we put the bug in, in ADOT's ear?
We've been working with ADOT for probably 10 years on trying to get a signal there. And we actually have about 60% plans done for it that we did.
Okay.
But they're, they're reluctant to spend their money on it.
I can't even get into redo Penal Avenue.
Yeah, so all these projects like left turn lanes on Rodeo and Penal, we've worked with ADOT to try to get them, throw some money in. So I, I don't want you to think we're just ignoring ADOT, but we're not having a lot of luck getting any funding out of them.
They have the same problem we do. How do you get it funded? Go ahead, Lisa.
And you know, I just really appreciate the presentation and the visual. You know, we see this on paper, we saw it in our budget meeting and it, but it's so nice to see it. And I hope the, you know, people that are, that are watching see these, these are arterial roads that are critical in the community for people to get around. So, you know, I'm happy to see that we are being proactive, we're investing in this infrastructure. And obviously, we have way more to go, but, but it's a start. So, again, I think that timeline's going to be good, mayor, because you can't just snap your fingers and people are going to be frustrated, you know, when the road that they use is, you know, there's construction going on. So, making sure that we keep that timeline out there, letting people know, you know, what's happening is going to be really important.
And as we do those too, they just sparked something, thank, thank you, Lisa. Can we make sure we have some signage out there, something that says, hey, your tax dollars at work or something, so that we at least point to, you know, this is your HIF money or this is your-
We've been doing that recently with most of our projects.
And the great thing with CG alerts is, you know, they're posting stuff, you know, with CG alerts when there's construction going on and everything. So thank you to the PIO team too for doing that.
Heather's sitting over there.
Yeah, Heather, I know, I pointed up there, but Heather's right here. Thank you. It's helpful.
And Becca's, Becca's up in the crow's nest.
And it is our plan that when, when Mr. Tice puts together his open house for the public, we'll be there so that we can answer those transportation questions. we'll be there so that we can answer those transportation questions. And if we develop project boards for each of those projects with timelines, we'll make sure that we identify clearly what the funding mechanism is for each of those projects, because it'll help us to be able to communicate, you know, what does that half-cent sales tax do for us? And I think it's really important that it's what we maintain roads with. It's not what we create new capacity. There just isn't enough there. Those other taxes, the PRTA, those types of efforts were for capacity improvements.
For the timeline, we're working with contractors on which one to build when. For instance, Pier and Quartzon really needs to be done in the summertime when school's out. So, we're working on those kinds of issues.
Okay, thanks, Dwayne.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can add just one additional item, as you can see, the majority of the work that's being done in the existing footprint, we have the right-of-way to make those improvements and actually act expeditiously. There are some areas where we're looking at some expansion that ultimately requires dedication of right-of-way. And one of the changes that was made a couple of years ago to our process is that as a development plan comes through, there's a condition that ultimately allows us access to right-of-way in certain areas if they've gone through recent entitlement. And so, but there are other areas that we still, we're still going to need to go through a process to obtain right-of-way and the like, particularly when we're expanding roadway infrastructure. So, just keep that in mind as you look at the timelines that we put out.
Matt, you have a question?
There's a couple of comments. I love the rapid response, you know, and rapid, and then you said, and rapid finishing, too.
Probably should say, government rapid response, which is as quick as we can move.
But this slide right here up is probably the most important, because I think any of us up here would love to have all four-lane roads and all turn lanes and everything right now, but it's a matter of, we need a lot of things, too. You know, and then the half-street improvement was a great plan. 1999, 2000, I imagine that we thought all the roads would be done within five years, right? And then in 2008, we know what happened there. So, we tried to make the new development pay its own way, which is a good policy, but now we're seeing that, you know, it's not keeping up with what we have. So, that's why we're doing it. And then, like Lisa said, it's going to be, you've got to be patient when the construction's happening. It's going to be painful for a little bit, but comfortable after that. And we talked about infrastructure, and at the forum the other night, we heard a lot about infrastructure from everybody, and it's very important. But we also need to think about the other infrastructure we can't see that we're doing a lot with right now, too. It's our sewer line projects, and our wastewater projects, and that sort of stuff. You know, $80 million worth, like Anthony told us at the State of the City. I mean, there's a lot going on. You can't see it, it's not glamorous, but it's also what we need, we have to spend this money on to keep up with everything. So, just, you know, patience is the thing. And, you know, if we hadn't had sewer lines, like the Burris Road sewer line 10 years ago, or whenever, we wouldn't have a lot of the problems now, because we wouldn't have any industry out there. You know, so it takes a long time to build the infrastructure, and then get it working and do that. So, again, just really happy to see, though, about that it's on the radar, we've got some money. And because we're physically responsible with this money, we have the $7 million to do this, do this rapid response thing. So, I appreciate the work on it from everybody, and we look forward to seeing it. And like you said, seeing the visual of it is a lot better. And just, speaking of the signs, like McCartney Road, huge project voted on our GO bonds, which is great. We know that's important to everybody. And the bids closed on Friday, I think, right? Or last week, all the bids were in for the construction, maybe? No, not yet. But I mean, it's under-engineering, it's out to bid, but no one knows, and people are still wondering, like, hey, you know, so we need to get that out a little more, that, hey, it's going, you know? It takes a while to get the right-of-way, get the engineering, get the infrastructure, but it's moving forward. And once we start construction, that's when people notice. But it's been being worked on for the past year almost, so they're big projects, and we will get them done.
So, Treckel and McCartney are construction manager risk projects. So, we are hiring a contractor, but he's not going to start building right away. Start working, we're at, you know, 30, 60% design right now. So, they'll be working with the designers to get the best possible product.
Yeah. But that's why I just want people to know, because people are asking me, it's in the works right now. You know, we're not just waiting on anything, it's moving forward.
No, and I just want to agree, the visuals, I think, are really important. I think it's important for the community to see those. I love the idea of itemizing the cost on these projects, Kevin. So, when we have the open house, I think it's important to include those, so they can see what we see about, you know, just to expand for six more cars, this is how much it's costing. It's important, so that outreach is going to be really important for us to do. Great job, though. I love the visuals, thank Matt.
Very good. Anybody else? All right.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank my team, because of course, we just finished a grueling budget process, and this was just thrown in on top. So, they've been scrambling.
Well, they know their stuff, so that's good.
And as well as Paul's team, working with us to put these maps together and get all this information gathered, a real team effort.
Well, I think the whole housing combination and steady and housing pressure affects the roads, right? So, I mean, they are connected, so thank you for putting them together. I think it gives a good picture. I think it also paints a good picture for our citizens, hopefully, that, you know, when we, if we, when we do this open house thing, I think the combination would be good to include, so. All right? Anything else, Larry? All right, well, thank you to staff, and we'll stand adjourned.
Thank you.